Recording in progress.
Okay, alright, it's seven oh one, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting order, we're in the Sheridan City Council Chambers. Yvonne, can you call a roll?
Yes, George.
Here.
Buckles.
President.
McElroy.
Here.
Heaver. Hodges.
Home!
Houston. Flynn. And Peter may be joining us online, he... Oh, there he is, let me allow him to talk now.
Peter, I think you can talk now.
I am here, I'm struggling with Zoom.
Perfect!
You're not the only person who has that problem. Okay, alright, so, first up, our first public comment period, I do have one card, I'll go ahead and read the... Little description thing. The public comment portion of the agenda is the opportunity for the council to listen to the public but not for dialogue. Public is allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city. The topic issue brought up may be referred by the council to the city manager for inclusion on a subsequent council agenda. Council has the discretion to ask questions after comments are concluded. Please note complaints should first be addressed to the appropriate city department and/or the city manager in prior to directly addressing the council. Okay, so we had one from Bryce Agwao.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for listening to this evening. For the record, my name is Bryce Agwao, I'm twenty-eight years old and have been resident of Sheridan for most of my life. I'm here tonight to speak to you about basketball hoops, which is kind of fitting, given tonight's final, March Madness final. So I, along with a number of other residents, have been cited by code enforcement for having a basketball hoop in front of our house on the patch of grass between the street sidewalk, often referred to as a park strip. If you drive around town, you will find many park strip areas populated with trees, mailboxes, signs, planters, and numerous other things. Apparently basketball hoops are where the line is drawn. The code that we have been cited under is chapter nine dot one six dot zero five zero subsection A, which states, quote, "No person shall, except unless permitted by ordinance, obstruct, cause, obstruct, or assist obstruction, pedestrian, or vehicular traffic on any sidewalk or street." As previously mentioned, the basketball hoop is in question on park strips, the patch of grass between the sidewalk and the street. As such, it seems that there may not actually be a violation of this particular section of the city code. Nonetheless, they've been told to either move them or decide to miss the court with potential fines of a hundred million dollars per day, but not compliance. As a matter of interest, whether this has been and will continue to be a staple activity for my family and many others. In my time playing basketball like this, I've never seen or heard of anyone's hoop falling onto a car or another person or causing any other damage. But the city of Sheridan's bulletin board ad and social media posts would have me believe this is an extreme hazard. The fact is, it really isn't. With the exception of the first few months of my life, and about a year and a half, almost a decade ago, I've lived my entire life in park strip. I've always had a basketball hoop like this, I played it when I was a kid, but now I'm playing with my kids. So I ask, is the position of the city, having a hoop in front of your house and playing basketball, as I have for nearly twenty years and many others have much longer than that, should be a prohibited activity in the city? Some will say that we can just go to the park and play, the park has just one court, two hoops on each end and two hoops on each side. If you have two groups playing half court, then the four side hoops are unusable, they run into each other. My kids are pretty young, and fairly often, there are individuals, activities, or language and use of the park, especially in the areas that older kids and adults use, like the skate park and basketball court, but I don't really want my kids around. We should be able to go outside of our house and play basketball in front of our home. Chapter nine dot one six dot zero five zero subsection G states that, quote, "Under circumstances found to be appropriate by the city council, the city council may, by resolution duly adopted and subject to any conditions and restrictions contained in such resolution, waive, alter, or otherwise modify any of the conditions or restrictions set forth in this session," end quote. I respectfully ask, please stop these senseless citations and let our kids play basketball. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to answer a question.
Go ahead.
Have you been personally cited for that?
I have.
Have they... See, I haven't been involved with this. Have they said, "While you're playing, it's legal, but if you're not playing, take it off of there," or are they just saying, "No, it can't be?"
They just said, "No."
Thank you.
Okay, alright, so we have amended agenda, so first up, we have Les Thomas in the Sheridan Fire District.
I always hope we're gonna have more Thomas. So... Yes!
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time. I'm gonna use a little bit of your evening, it's gonna be very brief, okay? To discuss, you have to hit for House Bill thirty-eight seventy. If you're not aware, over the past couple of years, I've had contact with our House Representatives, senators, etc. On a looming problem in the rural EMS, the ambulance service, and specifically the funding source, we're running extremely low on the capabilities to provide ambulance service for the area. And it's specifically based on how the state has set up the funding source, it's fee-for-service only. So unlike our tax district, our fire district itself receiving taxes, our EMS service is fee-for-service only. So we've had, over the past five years, we've had an extreme decrease in the amount of revenue that's available. So I started the conversation, like I said, a couple of years ago, and House Bill thirty-eight seventy was derived from our conversations. There's seventeen different organizations, well, sixteen in ours, that are on this House bill. We're happy to say that so far, it has cleared the House and it's going to ways and means. So with that being said, I have really gotten out to the community and I've talked to a lot of civic organizations and specifically some of our members here of the council. We have to do it all again. So I'm gonna have to send out additional letters of support, and the reason I'm here tonight is to bring it to speed on why, if you hear from me again, your letters have been great, we thank you greatly. So what they've asked us to do is to put them in one PDF. So far, we have around a hundred letters of support from our community, we're really, really proud of that. They didn't give us a number, they just said, "Show support." With that being said, I do have some handouts here, I'll leave Yvonne here, so if you wanna collect one way out, that would be great. If you have any questions, please contact us directly. So with that being said, one of the milestones is gonna be the sixteenth. It's, believe it or not, they call it the roadshow, to where they talk about specific House bill measures and such. It'll be at Capitol Hill there in Salem. I will, I've asked for two minutes, that's all they'll give me to speak on this subject. I can talk for hours, you guys already know this. But specifically, it's about the sustainability survival of your Sheridan Fire District's ambulance service specifically. Now, with the permission of my fire board, I wanted to let them know that I'd be talking to you tonight, and I wanted to share with them, as I'm gonna share with you, that sustainability, if this House bill doesn't pass, is gonna be very difficult. I say this, I say this, we've taken on generational debt over the past five years. We had a cash carryover for a long period of time here in Sheridan. But when the state raises our insurance rates as much as twenty-two percent, our lack, our decrease in volunteerism is down about twenty-eight to thirty percent. I have our volunteer president here representing tonight. We're actively recruiting volunteers, so if you know anybody in the community that wants to volunteer, in any capacity, we'd be happy to have them. With that being said, the reason we maintain the same workforce is based on the fact that our calls have gone up over two hundred in the past year and a half, so I'm sure you hear us going through town every day. We're gonna continue to offer the services we are, we're very proud of it, we're very proud to be a part of this community and our surrounding area. And I wanted the council to be aware that I've already started conversations with the county commissioners about the potentials. And those potentials are, if we don't receive some assistance from funding, they require us to go out for additional taxation. I personally, personal opinion only, believe that's not fair to our community, and I've voiced it such. Everyone pays a higher rate of taxes, we get it. But when I come to you and I come to our commissioners and I come to the state and I say, "This is not fair to our community," I wanted you to be aware of it as representatives of the city of Sheridan, because if you hear me talk about it, that's exactly what I'm talking about. I do know how small-town rumors work. So just be aware that when you hear about this, it's not in lieu of taxation, it is just to help us survive. And I wanted the council to be aware of that, so if you have any questions. It's very specific on here, I've learned a lot of neat things from the House Representatives. This is called a one-pager. One-pager is all the information on the front and back, it has to be bright and beautiful so you catch the eye of board members. So I'm gonna leave some of these for you, and then if you feel like you wanna reach out to House members specifically, these are the ways and means, chairs of the committee, that's what Representative Elmer, who's our local representative, is asking to do. I'll leave some of these here for you, and you can reach out directly to them, there's a link for your testimony. We're asking all the civic groups in town and the council, I don't know the status of what you're allowed to do or not do for the ORS, but if you feel in support, I know that I've had a conversation with the mayor about it, and we thank you guys very much for your support. Whether this thing passes or not, we're gonna continue to do what we do until we can, and I wanted you to be aware of that. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. Is this, Chief, would just be a one-time infusion of capital to the fire department?
That is a great question, and the answer is yes.
Fire district, excuse me.
Well, it's, yes, if we take it on behalf of the fire district, which we co-mingle funds correctly, I appreciate that question, however, it's a, what, the House Representatives say is one and dime, is the term they use with me. Yes, what will you do it for? Now, we're asking for three million dollars, one point five of that is to pay off the generational debt we've carried, which puts us at zero. The blessing and the curse of our forefathers paying for everything with cash is we're cash poor, we own everything. So the loans we take out have to be in the operational capacity. As I said earlier, when we have a lack of volunteerism, it has to be made up with career personnel. And if, I'm sure some of you own businesses or operating in the business world, you realize how extremely expensive it is to have full-time employees currently. So, good question. Yes, sir.
So, right now, the EMS is basically running off of the funds they have left from what they had before, I mean, there's no incoming source of income free books?
Jim, that's a great question, and the best answer I can give you is, so EMS fee-for-service is what the ORS asks for us. So an ambulance billing company, we have to pay an ambulance billing company, so if we transport somebody, a bill goes to the insurance company, Medicaid, Medicare, or privately pay. Where we're losing funding is, for example, if our ambulance leaves the building to go on a call, it's about six hundred and fifty dollars, our expense right away. And it's because we fuel, insurance, dispatch fees, we pay the salaries, employees, depreciation, ambulance consumables in the back. I have a formula for that. When my phone goes off at three o'clock in the morning, because I have it set up, my wife really doesn't like that, it buzzes, I find out that I get a forty-five dollar check from Medicare, they consider the amount of close. The payouts on some of these are four hundred and sixty dollars, so we're at negative status when we leave the building. Again, it's not the taxpayers' fault, which really bothers me, is because now they put me in a position where I have to ask again. I don't wanna continue to, this is just how the system's set up, so it's a losing cost. Even if we had carryover like we did, we have to continue to fight to get that carryover back, and each year, again, they're raising our insurance another ten percent, hers, we pay thirty-two percent, it's going up to thirty-six percent. I could go on for hours with this. It's a losing situation, but I hope I answered your question.
You did, thank you. Any other questions?
Alright, that was easier.
Thank you, Chief, awesome.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave this with her, if you guys have any questions, you know where we are. Stop by anytime, we'd be happy to help you, if there's anything we can do for the city, oh, one quick shout-out. We had an incident today out by Rock Creek, your crews came out with the water department, they were spot-on. They did a great job, they stopped a pretty massive water leak caused by a major wreck. So if you wouldn't mind telling them thank you, Kai, I greatly appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, thank you. Okay. So next, we have a work session topic. The future of the state-owned properties across the street. Those Mill Street properties, technically ones more in, that's when. The, so the properties, the little block right across the street, I think we know what it is. Kai, did you have?
I do, so there's about point three acres over there, or thirteen thousand square feet. A typical residential lot is about five thousand square feet. And so that property's not that large, it is zoned commercial. There are all, are quite a few options, there's stores, professional offices, clinics, residential care facilities, public and government use. Residential's allowed as long as it is a non-primary use or on the second floor. There's a perfect example about two blocks down where the internet companies in there and the barber shop slash hair salon's in there, and I don't remember where the other building is, but that's a pretty good example. It actually has storage in back, it has a parking lot. It's two-story, has four residential on top and then four businesses downstairs. That property is point two-two acres, so that property over there is about twenty percent bigger. The commercial zoning, some of the pros are that it does allow residential. Some of the negatives are, our downtown has a lot of vacancies, it's also zoned commercial. Those are older buildings, the rents are going to be lower than newer buildings. So that is a concern. We do have options, the city can, within law, chain zoning. It has to match the state plan and our own comp plan. But that is a possibility for the council to consider down the road. We are meeting with economic development director from Independence. I reached out to COG at a meeting and asked them who they would call for questions on these issues, and they said Sean or I. I still work with them, so I was like, fantastic, so Sean's coming over to meet with the mayor and I. The mayor showed a lot of interest in this, so I'm hoping he will pick up the torch, because I talked to Sean for about fifteen minutes, and the process he explained to me that he has used for these projects in the past are one to two years. And that's a lot of, that's a lot of staff time. Basically, that process looks like, for him, is that he reaches out to developers in the area and in the surrounding area and shows them kind of the layout and asks them what they would put on that property if it became available to them. He then picks through the issues that arise through those conversations, so these are multiple conversations with multiple developers. It takes you a while to even get your foot in the door with that developer. The developer has no interest in this other than he's helping the city out, it has the potential to look as a property when it becomes available. There's then an RFQ process, request for qualifications. The idea behind that, to me, is that you can look for someone who has successfully developed commercial property in other municipalities or even this one. That way, we don't end up with vacant buildings that have been stopped mid-construction or mid-remodel. There are a lot of cities that have those, we're not the only one. I bet just about every city around here has that issue. I know Independence does as well, while I was there, Monmouth has had some issues in the past as well. So these things can happen, and the idea between the RFQ is that separates people who want to be a commercial developer and people who are a commercial developer. So I think after Thursday's meeting with Sean, hopefully the mayor and I will have a better idea of what the opportunities are down the road. And we'll be bringing those back to council. This is for information only, so that's what I've got so far. We're gonna finish gravelling that lot and levelling it. It cannot be used as a parking lot, it can't be used for overflow. So during events, we'll be able to use that for overflow, but it cannot be a public parking lot because it is not paid. I don't know if anybody else has had any questions about the property or where those are at, but that's what we're gonna do right now.
Yeah, no, I think a few months ago, maybe almost a year ago, I know, I compared that lot over there that you're talking about with this one, and that it is, yeah, it's actually a little bit bigger. So if that's, if that's, you know, something council wants to do, I mean, commercial downstairs, but there's much upstairs, that would work, but the thing we have to think about is, is there enough commercial demand here? I mean, technically, yeah, we've got, you know, four storefronts over there, but they're not open, you know? So even if, if there was a business, they couldn't go in there. I know there's a couple others that are vacant, but, yeah, and I don't know who can tell us if there is demand or not. Because if somebody, you know, puts a commercial space, it's, I mean, I guess it's a kind of a gamble for them whether or not it's gonna get built.
I haven't flushed all this out with our planner yet. One idea, one thought I had was that the council could put out an RFP and then address the zoning later. That would be some risk to the developer. But, on the short term, I forgot to mention this, I apologize. Most cities that are successfully filling their downtowns that have vacancies are subsidizing the new buildings. So that is also a tool that the city has.
Subsidizing it in?
Either enterprise zone taxing, they're maybe paying some of the fees involved. And I do wanna say that while our fees are low, they're also have to be legally paid. We can't just write them off.
We can't waive them.
No, cannot waive STCs, they have to be paid, so if we waived them, we would pay the developers' STCs.
I think I've heard of other cities covering the cost or the, one of the problems we have here as opposed to maybe some other cities, is that there's a floodplain. And talking with Liam and, you know, the hider, that would be, if somebody wants to, you know, finish that the right way, they're gonna have to be floodplain standards, which is an extra cost. I don't think the city could cover that cost, because it's a lot, but...
So I have been mentioning the property when we have developers through, and Ten K Doors was very interested in it. But they would require a zone change, more than likely, to high-density.
What do they, what do they do?
Is it high-density back porch? I screwed that up again, but it... Okay, so it's already high-density, so I apologize for that, I've been confused by that a couple times with the map in my office.
Isn't it commercial?
No, it's, it's commercial.
It's commercial.
Yes, it is commercial.
These right here?
Yeah. It's confusing because it doesn't show the alley. So when you look at it from two feet away, it looks like one continuous block, and it's not, it doesn't show the alley. Yeah, so that's, that's the confusing part when you're looking at that map from a far away, okay, so...
Kai was right.
So the good news is that the city can resume that, but we'd have to look at the comp plan and go through the planning process.
What is Ten K Doors?
Ten K Doors is a developer who puts in affordable housing. And they do this, I'm not sure how many states, but I know that's more than five. I think they're at about thirty-five thousand doors so far, last count, which is a lot more than I thought they were at, because it's called Ten K Doors. But they have a project in town, it's eighteen units, I met with them a couple weeks ago, and just in in passing, I mentioned that project was there, and so we walked out, he looked at it, and he said, "I have about twenty-seven different plans for that property." So, but these are gonna, not all of those will fit in our development code either. They do development throughout the United States, so we would have to pare that, Liam would have to help pare that down with what meets our development code. But that would probably need a re-zoning.
Do, council, do you remember who, I forget the person's name, my memory's a great, we... She was on Zoom and she talked to us.
Talia.
Talia, Talia, oh, Talia, that's right, it was Talia, yeah. I forget what organization she was with, but I know she had, you know, interest in that and whether we were gonna lease it to her or rent it or something, but I don't think we're interested in leasing, I think we're interested in selling it to the right person. But we do have options as far as who we sell it to, right, Tyler? It's not like a regular, you know, real estate where you don't necessarily know who the buyer is.
You can micromanage the process then.
Okay.
You have direct what you want to happen.
Alright, Danny, Jim, okay. Okay, well, if anybody has something really specific in mind, I guess we can talk, oh, I think...
I think it's Liz's meeting.
Liz, okay, Liz, are you raising your hand? Oh, yeah, you are, okay, go ahead. If, you gotta unmute.
I should relieve there, right? So I think there was a huge behavior that we pulled Abashaw Stone in on this conversation, because she, that's what she does. And the other thing is, is when we had that presentation from the woman with, I forgot what company she represented, she was interested in it and exactly how you described it, Kai, as a dual commercial residential zoning. So there would be a commercial building of her business downstairs and then residential upstairs on that lot. Do you, do you remember that?
Well, I do, I don't know if Kai was...
Yeah.
I'm sure Kai was here, yeah, that's who I was just trying to figure out, it was Talia Plummer, that's who talked to us.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and my thought was, once the ground was, was level, that we could, you know, talk to her again, but if, you know, after, I don't know, we, after, you know, Thursday, when we talked to, you know, the economic development director of Independence, he might recommend a different way to go about this, but I don't, I don't know the right way to handle this, but... But yeah, Liz, I can talk to Abashaw, but she is industrial lands. She might, she might give me some advice since it's commercial, but she primarily, you know, does the industrial. I guess we could ask the COG as well, though, if they have, do an economic development, I think Laura was sort of, but she's...
That's how I got Sean.
She, okay, okay, so maybe talking to Sean, that might be the best.
I think that's our best step.
Forward. Okay, Jim?
I think, until you folks give us more information, we can talk online, but we don't have to talk about, so might as well wait for that.
My intent was just to get everybody's gears kind of turning and thinking about, and I don't expect council to come with a single decision on what to do with the property, I think that's best left to the developer.
Unless it's something that we're really, you know, opposed to, but it depends on if we, you know...
I feel like the only thing they can't put there is a marijuana dispensary because of the school.
Okay.
So, anything else that's legal in the zone is available to them.
And I can talk to somebody else who was interested in developing it too, and I can talk to them again. You know, that, you know, we're getting, moving forward in the process and, you know, with RFQs or whatever we decide to do, I can let them know.
That, that seemed to be what Sean said was the biggest piece, was engaging. So there's a couple council members here and a mayor that are pretty good at that. So I think we're gonna have to engage the public and see what interest can be trumped up and see what our options are, as letting you know that ahead of time, that there are some, it's a hill to climb because of the vacancies downtown, because other cities are subsidizing, it's competitive. Commercial real estate is not what we do. Cities do own commercial real estate also, by the way, so develop. And they do lease the ground, or they lease the building. So, and there are companies like White Oak in the area that have been to Independence before, we've had them here before, that own several, it's Fox, I can't remember his first name, but he's from Independence, ironically. And he owns most of the government buildings in Salem. And he leases those to the state of Oregon, so that would be someone else who could... And he leases those to the state of Oregon, so that would be someone else we could get in here or one of their subsidiaries to talk to us as well. I think this is just a first step, I think, you know, we had a development team meeting and talked about it and COG said they would call Sean, that's who they would consult with to give us information, so I was like, well, I can just go straight to Sean, so I think that's gonna work out great. And I think the mayor, uh, really, you and Sean, I think are getting along fantastic, so. I'd say it'd be a good pairing for us, but like I said, this could be a two-year-long project.
Well, I don't, I don't like the two-year part, but we gotta start somewhere. Uh, okay, um, anything else on that, any other thoughts?
I'd like the council to consider the fact that we've talked about possibly, you know, somebody I I relocated in the city hall, well, instead of spending all that money on a new city hall, you could expand our city hall west and then use that for the parking lot for the employees because you're gonna need one. And the other thing was in years past, it didn't always have to be gravel lots to order to do a business. It was changed in a previous administration. And um it was actually, I believe, changed right after they got the South Park in and then they put, they must be paved because that grandfathered in the South Park. And I think that uh whatever they did to change that ordinance, they could change it back or kind of like rezoning like Kai was stating, probably a lot easier to do it to make it, change the gravel to pavement than it is all the zoning, but also because we don't know what the city's gonna require, if you ever wanted to enlarge, that could be the perfect place and would save the community a lot of money in our budget that we obviously don't have a lot of money with. And also what the city could do if it was paved is we had talked about or maybe I was talking to somebody else that like in Salem, they have a block and they bring in, like you were talking about the hurricane, somebody felt like they had an obligation to relocate them, which the city doesn't when they were looking at that brownfield plot, but they could pave it and use it for parking and if you wanted to seasonally, you could uh have uh food cart vendors in there uh to have parking for them, I mean, or at least part of it, but you didn't, like I talked to Kai and he said you can use it for overflow, which makes it nice for anytime there's a festival, if the riverfront gets fixed and people have trailers for their boats instead of picking spots behind the museum. They could park their boats and other vehicles also in the overflow parking. And I'm not saying, I just say keep that in mind with your other options because it's very, well, that the city could use that lot to, you know, take care of the the community that's already here and gives a future for expanding the city hall because I think this building is a great building the way it's targeted after, you know, the old train depot and it's in a great location for the, you know, for people coming into town. And that parking lot in across the street is would just be real handy dandy, but you could use it for other things seasonally, you know, if you wanted.
Yeah, depending on how it's laid out, I mean, it's it's pretty big for just a parking lot, I suppose, but it it would it would definitely give more spots than the number of spots that are here, I think it's limited, there's what, maybe eight, ten spots? We've got a lot more over there.
Well, if they wanted to keep X amount for parking, they could and then bring in a couple of those, they have some really nice ones out on Lancaster Drive. If you uh take a right and there's like a half a block of these food vendors and they're all different and they're very attractive, it's just very nice. And you could do a month to month or, you know, a three month or it's not like you had to be tied into them, but you wouldn't even have to do it for you, you could just do a month to month. And that would give the city some income that, you know, I mean, they can check around to see what those rent for, but I'm gonna kind of have to stay in a smaller area, but still, I mean, I think they can have some at Amity and, you know, it's just an option to think about.
That's a good point. Um, okay, so. Moving on then, we'll go to an IGA with um Sheridan, Will, and Amity for the Water Source Protection Grant. Remember hearing, we got it and I remember hearing when we applied to it, but I'm glad we're on the next step, it just takes a while. Is there, anybody have any concerns about the IGA?
He's for background there.
Did you have background?
Background, that's from Business Oregon, that's where the grant was from, it's for fifty thousand dollars. Sheridan was the main applicant with partnering with Will, and Amity for the water shift group, all three cities. I'm not actually sure how that will lay out, of course, us and Will and Mine and Geography, we're really close. I'm not sure about the Amity, other than they have an intake on the ML that we share. With them, all three of us take water out of local rivers, tributaries. We haven't picked a contractor yet or facilitator for the grant. We need Will, and Amity on board before we do that, should the council accept the IGA.
Jim? I talked, excuse me, with founder about this a little bit, Ford, me, I did have a couple questions about the intergovernmental agreement, but it seems pretty straightforward and uh we wouldn't necessarily have to do a whole bunch because the um that's we're looking for, I mean, consultant would be uh the one that does all the driving, we might have some staff time to fill out paperwork or whatever, but they're the ones that are really gonna uh run the project, which would make it pretty simple for us at the time.
There's eight views total and two that were public, so they will probably take place in council.
I move to approve the intergovernmental governmental agreement between the city of care, city of Will, and City of Amity.
Okay, any discussion? All right, um, we'll go ahead and vote then, all in favor? Okay, that's, okay. All right, I think that's unanimous then, okay, great. Okay, next. Oh, okay, uh, next we have um city logo contest. We have those in the back. So. First one was uh tweaked a little bit. I got a hold of the person and um gave us a little feedback, council hats, we tweaked it a little bit and added some more color, different color. The first place one. And the way he uh laid it all out was uh like like an official, like, well, brand style, I guess is what they call it, a style guide. That was nice. Then, yeah, we have the second place and third place. Same with the the third place one, um, this was one that we saw before and then I got a hold of the person who submitted it and gave some feedback about the adding some color.
And I thought I might just add in case anybody's wondering, there are two different ones, like in the second place, it went um by submitters, so if you submitted um five of them, you were still kind of, if if they selected, you know, two out of your five or one out of your five, that it was per submitter, so those were the two favorites that for that submitter that were selected.
I think the main one was the one on like the front page. Third, second place, although we talked about, they probably need to add a bridge.
Bridge is now looks pretty, you know. But Jim, obviously this first place submission, they've done a lot of work figuring, changing colors and changing sizes, which is really nice. Uh, the second uh place, I'm gonna share this, because you mentioned they might wanna slap a a bridge in there. Well, this is the logo for the Sheridan revitalization movement and it's looks an awful lot like this, but they've got a bridge in there, so I think there'd be some, you know, if you wanted to go with that first, we'd be almost like copying and repitalization and it's already got out there.
Anybody have any thoughts or concerns about the first place, we can always tweak it. It's ours, if we wanna go with it, we can always tweak it and make it look a little different. Go ahead.
I think I'd like to visit the logo idea overall at a another point in time and I for the logos portion of the contest thing, I think this was awesome and I love that it's here and we should choose these in for that, like the first, second, third places. But we're not adopting these as the logo necessarily, right?
Uh, I think so, yeah, that's what the, we can always, you know, table the the motion, but yeah, it is, it is a vote.
Okay, yeah.
We we could separate out like you're proposing, you know, to
I'm just thinking maybe
award the winners, but further discuss how to use them.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, because I think we're able to use, I think, any of them that were submitted, but these are like the, you know, first, second, third place, but we can use them in different areas, like I think the third place one we talked about would look really, I think, Yvonne, you know, suggested on the website with it being there. You know, this this one, it would look on sides of vehicles or whatever, you know, stuff like that, we can talk about. Even has like uh, which this one, they they kind of went above and beyond on the the with the style guide, but I mean, they provided the text and colors, but we can change that too. So you're thinking, uh, you know, discussing where they're used or how we use them at a later date? Or just table, you know, the whole thing, discuss it later, what are you thinking?
Um, I think the word is, we are, uh, I guess, we've 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 asked for the logos, we did the contest and we've asked to, we've submitted to them to to get them and we've gotten them and I think we should choose them, they're, I think this is really fun and cool, uh, but I was thinking maybe we should have a a further discussion amongst ourselves about other aspects we may wanna add or subtract to
Gotcha.
where we select it as the final
Yeah.
resolution is all.
Okay, I got you.
Different phrases, maybe different things that might indicate the history better or culture better, personally.
Okay, I see what you're, yeah, I get, I get what you're saying, okay. Yeah, I think we can still award, you know, first, second, and third, and then before we go, put them on vehicles, talk about. Uh, who's raising their hand?
Liz.
Okay, Liz, go ahead.
Hi, um, I'm on the art group committee, as you know, I I'm Kale, sorry, I said Kai. And one thing we discussed, and I don't have it in front of me, but there's the children drawing drawings, we discussed rotating those on the city website just to feature children in town, so they would be on a rotation basis with all those drawings and then every year possibly doing that to get more children more involved in civics activities. Um, that, I don't know if you mentioned that, Kale, I didn't hear you, but um, that was one thing we had talked about and I just wanted the council to know.
Yeah, we um, the first round, yeah, we actually got a couple, I think, from some high schoolers and I think third place might be a student, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but yeah, the the idea is like, um, you know, there's you know, other cities do it, I think we've done in the past where it's like, like a student submits like an essay, it's like, you know, something about being the mayor and then they're like a mayor for the day. Doing something similar where it's like an art contest for the kids and then their art basically gets put up like on the Facebook or website or something. I mean, we could still have an official logo, but their art, you know, related to shared, because it does, it wouldn't have to be a logo, it could be any art they wanna do. And then rotating that through either on the website or Facebook, um, and doing that like a yearly thing, uh, that was an idea that came up, um, I think would be good, Jim?
Since we've uh said we're gonna talk about how we use these uh later on, uh, I made the motion that we accept what the uh order of uh first, second, and third place that the art group has already selected.
Okay, first and the second, okay, any other discussion on that?
I just have a question, we previously identified the award amounts.
Yes, five hundred, three hundred.
Okay, there's no other discussion, okay, we can.
I just wanna say that I wanted to thank the people who put these in there and the time they took to do it, because every one of them has really great new ideas that I can really appreciate looking at it differently. And if we're just awarding today and then we can go in there and tweak those items at another time. I think that's a good idea because there's little things I like off each one of them. But this one, I do like the the first place that got it, but all of them and the time it took for the people, whoever they are, just wanna say thank you for uh caring enough to, you know, participate and bring like fresh ideas to the to the city.
Uh, okay, Liz, are you ready? You got your hand?
No, I'm sorry, I thought I lowered it, is it ready? It says lower it here.
Okay, yeah, it was, it's it's okay, I thought I heard it. Okay. Um, okay, so uh, there's no other discussion, um, we're gonna vote, uh, all in favor? Okay, I think, yeah, okay, so I think that's unanimous. Okay, yeah, she got her hand up again, okay. Okay. Great, yeah, I know we we've we've talked about that for a while and the public logo contest was something that just came to mind, some guys that that worked out and got some good submissions. Okay, uh, next up, uh, we have appoint planning commission member. I think we have that on the side. We got one. So there's, you know, as long as no one's opposed, we can go ahead and just appoint, I know we put it out there, but bulletin board and advertise it, so we got one. But yeah, if there's, nobody opposed, I'll go ahead and appoint. Okay, so I'll go ahead and appoint, uh, Roxy, I kept to the planning commission. She's still, she's still, she's still here. Okay, well, congrats, Roxy, she belongs right in front of me, so I have to look around, so I'm glad, glad you uh watched it. Okay, next we have Parks and Recs committee member. This one also got one, um, I believe I talked to, um, was it the city county dinner, I think?
Uh, the COG dinner.
The COG dinner, that's what it was, okay, yeah, um, I talked to her briefly, she was there. But I believe she was already on the the committee, so.
Yeah, so I think she attends, but she's like wasn't
Oh, okay.
on there as an appointed person.
Um, okay, well, does anybody have any opposition for for field lead to be appointed?
I know Dorothea through the revitalization and she, I think, would be a very good person for the Parks and Rec. As long, uh, the same with Roxanne, of course, being in the uh planning commission, very knowledgeable, both of them are, so I think she'd be a good person to bring positivity to that that group.
Jim, uh, like she just said, I also know Dorothy, she runs a plant business, so I think she belongs on the Parks and Recreation Committee. She understands not just house plants, but plants outdoors as well, so.
Right, well, then, yeah, as long as no one's opposed, I'll go ahead and.
I don't think I oppose your Parks and Rec.
Well, I wanna ask. Okay, well, yeah, then I'll go ahead and appoint Dorothy Lee to the Parks and Recs committee. Do we have any vacancies on the Parks and Recs or is it full again?
I think it's full again, I think, Omega hasn't mentioned any vacancies, so hopefully we're we're up to.
Okay. Okay.
Liz.
Liz? Okay.
Sorry, I, alright, I just wanted to mention that Dorothea was appointed, but she came in and and took someone's term, they ended someone's term and that's why she's upping, you know, re-upping this term. And I think she's an excellent person for the Parks and Rec, as Jim said, with her hard cultural knowledge for her cultural knowledge, and I wanna congratulate Roxy, thank you, Roxy, for uh applying for the Plant Planning Commission.
Okay. Well, uh good, next, uh uh next, we have uh the bid for sewer collection maintenance. Uh is that from you, Kai?
Yeah, that's from me.
Okay.
So the city, we have a collection system for our wastewater and that runs throughout town and we have pipes underground. And in those pipes, you get what they call ionized inflow infiltration, it's groundwater. As the table rises up in the winter time, as we get precipitation, uh more water gets into the sewer pipe. And the cost of that is the treatment plant can't tell the difference between rainwater and sewer. So that drives up our costs for treatment. It actually uh makes it harder for us to show the state that we're treating efficiently because the wastewater is watered down. So this is a program, normally, uh I like to run these programs inside the collection maintenance line. So you would dedicate a certain amount of dollars per year uh to finding, locating and repairing these manholes. And we also do slip line, so we'll be probably going through that budget since I would probably be here for that process and I'll talk to you more soon through that. In in effect, it's it's cost saving, chemicals are going up every year, uh and electricity as well. So those are the two components that we use to treat our wastewater, so the least amount of water that can get into the plant, the better off the city is uh for cost maintenance. Also, we're required by DEQ uh to do these programs and we report these every year. So this is part of that program and it'll go into the twenty twenty five report that's due Jan- January twenty twenty six. And uh we'll talk about it more later, but this is the company that's been doing this for the last few years. Melocular and they were low bidder again, which is great because we have uh some warranty work for them to do as well. So and they've been good to the city so far, so we're glad they were a little better.
How long have they um been working to say?
Uh I'm not sure, cause I, cause it's low bidder, so some years it changes, but I think this is the second or third consecutive year.
Okay.
Jim? I just wanted to ask, I'm sure it's a waste of time, but we have the money, right? So set up a line number and.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And then if I, I'll just keep going, uh with the above knowledge, I move, we award the uh bid to sewer collection maintenance to Melocular Incorporated in the amount of forty one thousand three hundred dollars.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Uh after, there's a second, you can.
I said.
One second, okay, all right, now there's a first and a second, okay, Liz, now you can ask your question.
Okay, sorry, um Kai, is that a yearly cost, forty one thousand dollars a year for that, or is that just a one-time cost?
This is a bid for, I believe, twenty five manholes, we usually bid out between twenty and twenty five. Uh they, depending on how much repair they need, depends on the cost prepared for each individual manhole, so they actually come out, inspect the manholes with the crew, or we take photographs or video for them as well. So this is a one-time cost and I think the warranty's good for five years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So it's like preventative maintenance, so like next year, you know, there could be probably the same.
Around the same amount, yeah, and and that's the idea, and when we start doing CIPP, so we'll have, let's say, two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the collection system uh line item. And there'll be a drop down box, whether we actually put it in Excel or I just tell you, but it'll be fifty thousand for manholes, a hundred and fifty for CIPP, which is pipeline or for main lines. And that way, and then that, the the other, what would that leave? Fifty grand would be for fat trucks and that sort of thing, when we have plugs and things like that, point repairs.
Good. We've talked about uh having this done prior, basically drop the manhole and go in and coat the hole underneath the manhole to stop the water from getting into the, also still the edges of the manhole, wanna go back in, so.
That's exactly it, yeah.
Yeah. Last time they were doing, they did like smoke testing, are they doing that again? Or something different?
No, that is for this, that is for similar, that's for cross connections, but it's similar, I, it's an RNA issue, so yeah, it's in the same ball.
Okay. Is there any other comments we have, first and the second?
Liz has her hand up, I'm not sure.
Guessing that's a mistake. Okay, um, okay, so I'll go ahead and call for a vote, then, uh all in favor? Okay, Liz, do you wanna vote too? Unless she's, I guess, I guess she she could be opposed.
It says raise hand, is my hand raised or am I doing it?
You would click the raised hand.
There's the.
There you go, gotcha, okay, that's unanimous, okay, thank you.
Okay, it's it's counter to, cause it says lower hand when your hand is raised, so, okay, thank you, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so uh next up.
Question, information?
Yeah.
Uh if you also were to adopt a resolution for this, for the um city, would would that have to happen during the the business or can we address that during the mayor and council discussion?
We can bring it up during the council.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, I think it can happen anytime. Uh, okay, so so next up is a forklift purchase, uh who's that?
Yeah, so just for informational, the city had budgeted uh funds for a forklift. Public Works has identified one through a mechanic and it is a local forklift. I will be honest, it's not the forklift we wanted, um but who we're getting really a deal on is what I'm being told by public work staff, it's twelve thousand dollars. So it's below my threshold and it's well below the budgeted amount, but I just wanted to make council aware that we're gonna move forward with that, purchase that forklift. And and we're going to keep our old forklift as soon as we get it fixed, it broke again. And we're gonna put that up to the water plant and that way, when we're doing chemical runs, we don't have to have the Tommy lift gate and the pallet jack, well, this will actually be a lot better for public works, I think, uh a lot less sore backs and smashed toes. So because of those fifty five gallon trucks are really heavy, um and so are the pallets we unload, so I have a forklift in both locations, so it'd be great. We just gotta get the other one up again.
I just wanna thank you for bringing it to the council.
Yeah, well, considering the history, that would be an idea, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, um, okay, so I think that's it, unless there's any questions about forklift. Okay, okay, all right, so next we have second public comment period, uh Yvonne, okay, we got one. Okay, um Tyler, do I need to read the whole?
You could just say same rules as.
Okay, okay, so second public comment period, uh same rules as first co- public comment period, okay.
Did I hear anything about the interim city manager?
Uh that was forklift uh purchased update from interim city manager. Okay, okay, oh.
That I think that that, you know, that's my bad, I I prepared the updated agenda and I forgot that we're contacting the city manager.
Okay.
Even though I wanna really criticize other people for making mistakes.
Okay, all right, so we have got a bullet comment form uh from Bobby uh Rockstrom, is that right?
Yeah.
Good, right, yeah, you wanna come on out?
Thank you for coming. So my name's Bobby, um been a resident of Sheridan for almost ten years now. Uh never had any issues until started getting code violations and then for basketball hoop. And uh um at the beginning, I was gonna be a little nuisance and keep the basketball hoop, but I came down and I spoke with our code enforcement lady about it and the violation that she stated and wrote off for the violation was and then put in quotes basketball hoop. As a community member, looking as a city official, I don't think it's appropriate for our city official of the code enforcement to be able to write in what she thinks is junk. Cause we all know what junk is, you know, it's the parked cars that sit there for months, you know. It's not basketball hoops that our kids go out and play with, you know, and that stuff. And then I just seen, I seen the big thing she had wrote out that now it became public safety, safety for the kids. You know, I've, since I've been here, I've not heard once uh a child getting hit from playing basketball. I've, none of my kids have ever been hit, you know, they play in the street all the time and that, and I just think it's, it's a little mind new, you know. For when there's bigger issues as a community member that I see to go around nitpicking for basketball hoops, you know. And Liz said it, she said it perfectly uh earlier in the meeting, she's all like, she said to the thing of, you know, getting our kids out and interacting. This is showing our kids that they can't interact, they can't be outside, you know, sit inside, be on your tablets. Just thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh Yvonne, is there any, any others?
Uh that was all.
That was it, okay, okay. Uh, okay, so uh moving on then, next is the mayor and council discussion. It's been a week or two ago, I think, I was at, um there was an event held by two representatives from the House, losing representatives, it could be senators, but anyways, they they were, they called it Water Day at the Capitol. It wasn't actually at the Capitol, it was at um where the last cog dinner was actually, um but anyways, uh I was there, there's a lot of um different cities there, city managers, mayors, um and they had several speakers talking about, you know, water and infrastructure and um they had like uh, you know, tables set up from different organizations that had info, um so I grabbed a bunch of, you know, a bunch of stuff. It sounds like their biggest issue is that, you know, water infrastructure, infrastructure funding in general doesn't usually get a lot of funding from the, you know, the state's budget, it's kind of a a lower priority item, even though it's every city needs more infrastructure funds, it sounds like that's, you know, a a common theme across the state. But that was interesting, I talked to uh Amity's mayor there for a while, um and um can I think of anything else? I've done, I mean, it is, the legislative session is going on, I've written a couple letters regarding a couple bills, um I don't know if anybody's written, you know, anything, I know Les was here and uh they had a a neat setup where you can just, you know, have add your name and some of your info and then you say you're you're pro the uh HB seven, the three eighty, sorry, three thousand eight hundred seventy. Yeah, thirty eight seventy, um yeah, that's kind of my update, I don't have a whole lot else to add. Uh anybody wanna go around or anybody have anything?
I do.
Okay, well, Liz, you go first.
Um, I would just like to piggyback on the two residents that that were kind enough to come in, address the basketball hoop issue. I I wholeheartedly think that as a council, we should look at that ordinance and perhaps change it because there's not a whole lot for kids to do in our town and basketball is a really healthy, good activity for them. And as far as I, I mean, I grew up with four brothers and we always had a hoop out in front of our house and I never ever heard of anybody having a hoop fall on them, fall on a car or anybody, a child getting hurt. Most children that are playing basketball are quite aware of a big car coming towards them. So I think I I would just like to advocate as a council, we should re, we should um look at that again, look at that ordinance and reconsider it in relation to the kids in this town and the lack of activity that they have available to them.
Yeah, yeah, I was planning to, uh I think Ian might bring something up about voting on a resolution. But I was also gonna say that, you know, this is something I do wanna look at, cause I I played basketball in the street, you know, when I was a kid and there was never, you know, any issues, um sometimes if you dunk too hard, the the hoop would come down, but that was really the only time that it was kind of dangerous with the hoop, but um you know.
Ten foot hoop?
Well, no. No, it was, um but, you know, it was something for us to do and as Liz said, there isn't a whole lot for us to do and I'd rather, you know, kids be playing basketball than getting into some kind of trouble, so that's, you know, my point of view on it, uh Ian, do you have something?
I don't know what you is, but I'd like to vote to legalize dunk dunking too hard. So uh I think I'd like to make a motion to um adopt a resolution. The the council direct the uh the city to uh the exclude specifically basketballs from these departments.
Uh Lucy first.
I can go first, Kai.
Okay, Kai.
So I'm the interim city manager and the public works director, so I know why that law exists. I would propose that we discuss this at another meeting and council can bring their arguments. I'm not an elected official, so I will be the cog and you can all be the pro. And we can have a discussion about that. It's right of way, so anything over fourteen feet in the right of way is an obstruction for traffic. That's why that is there. I just want to teach you know the risks before you make that decision, whether I agree with you or don't agree with you, I just wanna make sure you understand the risks involved with excluding that.
All right, Lucy?
I I agree with Kai in the fact that we need to discuss that before we pass it because um depending on where the basketball hoop is, there's some areas that are very high traffic that would impact other vehicles and people, but once you decide you can, you can't pick and choose who gets to do it. And I don't really know what happened, when I was a kid, basketball hoop was mounted on the roof over the garage and you played on your cartport and shot your baskets, I I know they came up with these portable ones, but that just would go with the conversation of the conversation of having discussing the basketball hoops in general.
Yeah.
So I would like to discuss it first before you make a a decision.
I'll leave this grabbing a motion.
Well, that's true, okay.
Could you please repeat your motion?
I make a motion, uh I make a motion that we uh as the council adopt a resolution to exclude temporary basketball hoops from chapter nine, point one, six, point zero, five, zero, subsection eight.
Right, there's a first. Peter, do you have a comment or are you trying to second?
Comment.
Okay, so hang on.
You just see it earlier, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll submit that motion.
Okay, it's a second, okay, so Peter, now you can talk.
Rather than adding an exception and loading the ordinances, um Tyler, I was curious if we could pass a motion now just to uh forego further enforcement on basketball hoops and then we can discuss it at a later date. Uh I'm very much in favor of exempting basketball hoops, but I'm wondering if there's a better solution to this.
Does that like a temporary like pause on any enforcement until we can get a, you know, resolution language that's, we're all happy with?
Yeah, exactly.
Tyler, does that work?
You can make that decision, I will echo Kai's concerns about making any type of permanent changes. You can make that decision, I will echo Kai's concerns about making any type of permanent changes. If we temporarily forego enforcement, you could play basketball on Bridge Street. And I think everyone would agree that's a really bad idea, so I think there are a lot of risks. That could arise.
But if it's paused enforcement, then?
Then we can't do anything about the basketball hoop on Bridge Street.
Well, if that happens, then it, it'll, we'll have a different.
I would advise the council a lot to do that, but it is within your own authority to.
Uh, I don't know who was first. Okay, Jim.
I'd like to make a motion to table this motion at the next meeting. We can thoroughly discuss this, cause I understand what Kai and. Grab a thing for Kai, uh, Kai and Tyler are saying. I'm in favor of having basketball hoops out there, but we have to really nail down what is and isn't allowed, it's a. Pain in the butt that I just make a motion to table this motion until the next meeting, we can really thoroughly examine.
So you, are you revocating or second?
No, I, I already seconded his motion.
Right.
And now I'm saying, I made a motion to table the motion that I just seconded.
Can you have, I guess, finish this first and then do your second?
No, cause when it did pass, then I can't table it. Okay, so do we have a second for Jim? You do, okay. So. Okay, so you can go, well, go ahead.
Discussion is limited to the motion to table Ian's initial motion.
So explain it to him after he's done, listen to his comment first and then.
I agree that, uh, we should, um, hold off to, to, um. To word it correctly as, and maybe even potentially add, uh, maybe a subsection of with exemptions specifically. Uh, instead of the motion that I have made, however, in the meantime, I believe that the citizen here that spoke earlier, Mr. Abuiyo. I believe that he is correct, that the way the law does specifically now read, that this, it must cause. Uh, a, a traffic obstruction and that's, oh, that's pretty ambiguous and. Not that, that, um, an inanimate object sitting in the right of way is not obstructing traffic, that children in the street are obstructing the traffic. So I think it's kind of, we're already kind of like pretty vague on it, so can we at least stay? With enforcement, something else for right now, can we focus on something else?
I just wanna remind the council that, uh, maybe I'm the only one that remembers that. But a small boy was on South Bridge Street and was only chasing a ball and he got hit by a car pretty severely, didn't kill him, but. Put him, put him in his arms, make him quiet awhile, and that was just chasing a ball out in the street.
Somebody have their hand up on it?
Uh, Peter did.
I did, but I realized it doesn't pertain to the tabling, so I can wait a few seconds here.
Okay. All right, so the motion is to table Ian's motion. Is there any other discussion on that?
Just, uh, once we do this, then we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Yes, that's what I plan to do. Okay, so, all right, all in favor of tabling Ian's motion? Okay, Liz's hand was up for a second, so that's, yeah, okay. Yeah, cause I, I had heard about this and I think it's, you know, something I want kids to be able to do, but. It, it also makes sense not to let them play on Bridge Street, so, okay, um, if I have anything else?
Peter has his hand up, so does man Liz.
Okay, uh, Peter, go ahead.
In the meantime, is anyone open to finding a way to, uh. Stop these folks in this community from incurring fees while we wait to discuss this? Cause what is that, two weeks out and supposedly they might incur fee by today?
I would advise the council against taking any action at this point in time to direct our code enforcement officer to change how she's.
I haven't read specifics, but what I understand is if you get a citation. You've got time to correct the issue. If you don't correct the issue, you get a second citation. If you still haven't corrected the issue, you'll get a third citation and then go to court, do I have that correct?
I think some violations.
You get one, should be any citation, if you just change your citation, the, the handle should be the same. You get three shots at it to get it right.
Yeah, I thought it would, it differed depending on the violation, Tyler, is it three across the board?
I don't know what Angela's practice is, that's not, uh, anything I think is defined in the code specifically, I think that's. The city's attempt to gain voluntary compliance.
So might be a little different.
To be slightly less of the fun place, we could retroactively waive any fees incurred by citizens after a future discussion. Fees are levy for basketball hoop violations.
So could we do that, like, waive any previous fees?
In the future, yes, we could do, yeah.
But could we do that right now?
I don't think that'd be stupid, but yeah.
Okay, all right.
And we're still gonna enforce moving forward, and we don't have the outcome of the discussion.
Oh, gotcha, okay, yeah, okay, Ian?
Potentially, could we, uh, have the administration, direct the administration to speak to the, uh, maybe have. Uh, I'll just say this, I spoke at some length to Mr. Winters, who's the code enforcement officer for Newburgh. And asked him many questions, all kinds of questions, um, was very informative and forthcoming and loves to talk about code. Whether or not, um, and I mentioned, you know, different things about code here and Sherry and I had questions about how. It was definitely work, and so maybe we could have our code enforcement officer speak with. Newburgh's code enforcement officer as I ask if that could be a possibility and then I would speak to you at some point in time, so now I have.
Well, I know, like, somebody running away with these fees, but we. Oh, and she does, but yeah, I think, so, so somebody did bring up waiving fees, but I think Tyler, that doesn't make sense. Um, I think we can probably just not, if, if there's a motion, possibly just not collect any fees if there's, if it's getting to that point. For anybody, uh, while we're, you know, deciding what to do, but, um, Liz, you have your hand up?
No, I'm sorry, I don't, okay.
It's fine.
Let's just assume whenever a hand is up, it's.
Well, I wanna check, I wanna check.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, Ian?
I believe that what Tyler's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we can do absolutely nothing right now and just say. Here, that if we would like to in the future, we could retro, we could go back and retroactively change these fees, these fines, is that what you're saying? We could retroactively go back and say?
I am saying that about part two, with part one, the council has an awful lot of authority to take action. So I'm not saying that you can't, we're advising against it, but.
That's what you're saying?
Yes, in.
That'd probably be a, a more appropriate action at this point in time.
Correct, thank you. All right, Lucy?
No, it's your fault because you keep talking about it and I've got a question, so is the, the deal, these are props up? What I'm thinking, they're those portable basketball hoops, correct? And so they got cited for having it out in the street, correct?
Evidently, I'm not familiar with either.
I'm, I'm not really sure.
I think we should just defer the conversation to the client first so that we.
Know what we're doing.
Instead of just continuing to talk about it.
I understand that, which is why I voted, that's why I think we should, but my thing is to alleviate the fines if they get warnings is, uh. Push the basketball hoop into the driveway and it's not fair, isn't it, doesn't that kinda sound like an easier way to, uh?
I, I think the, the violation's very, is, is what I'll say, but, so I think that would be good to, at the next meeting, we can see. What some of these, uh, violations were, um, and then have some of that info and then also talk about what to do going forward. Uh, okay, well, well, is there any, anybody else we can, anything else we can do?
Uh, I do.
Oh, okay, Lucy?
Uh, what's the status on the, um, RV, uh, the South Park, having, uh, somebody up there to be a custodian? You know, guard, manager?
The park host?
Yes, host, yes, sorry.
We're still accepting applications.
Cause I know that two people have applied for it and they were wondering, I think one of them waited long enough and they, they moved out. They were down here at the RV park, cause I talked to Joel about it, cause she knows people in there really well, and they did fill out an application. But they never heard back and I think they might have asked, and I do know that somebody else, uh, was going through town. And I had mentioned to him and they filled out an application for the city also, so I was wondering what the status of that, is it just, are they waiting?
I'm aware of one application, but I'll get you an answer.
Okay. It's a man and a woman, then the second one just a little bit, maybe two weeks ago, maybe three.
Okay, I did make, anything else?
And.
I was gonna, Lucy?
And then, you know, in regards to my misinformed statement, you know, update on the interim city manager, is that something we can ask?
Uh, I think so, I think it's a cog, cog contract, that's what we take action on next.
So the, um, the master services agreement and the rate schedule that we adopted in. May of last year, which is effective for one year, covers the provision of interim city manager services, so there is no separate contract. To accept.
Okay, is there a separate vote that we, that we need to do then to appoint it?
No, it'll be started on the fifteenth.
Okay, is anybody, is everybody fine with that?
Well, yeah, I just don't remember ever, you know, legally voting on it because, you know, the situation, so I, I didn't know if there was that. You know, everybody's hands up, do a vote count, you know, that never, I don't remember that happening.
Yeah, it didn't, cause it was exact, yeah, it was just.
Is that something, don't you have to do that legally, should we vote?
We already have a contract that covers these services and the consensus of the council was to move forward with.
So consensus is, is what did it?
I mean, we could have a vote.
I mean, I mean, you know, just legally for the record, I just. I just a question asked and then if it's legally voted, then we can tell, you know, the public will know what's going on.
There's nothing prohibiting us from having to vote on it.
I forgot his name.
Preston Plastic.
Well then, I make a motion to.
Plastic with a P.
I make a motion to, is it that, Plastic?
Plastic, like, like plastic, the pickle.
Okay.
That's what he says.
Say the name, please.
Preston Plastic.
Thank you very much, um, be hired as our interim manager.
Second, with second, I guess technically hiring, it's through the call, through the call, okay.
It's a temporary legal change.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so there's first and second, um. Anybody discussion?
There was, uh, a lawsuit that, uh, he was involved in, that I was not, um, pleased to see for this exact position with another city. I don't know this person at all and I was unable to attend the meeting to meet him, um, but I don't have any reason to vote for him, so.
I can talk to you about that.
Sure.
Situation, cause I talked to him about it too.
Okay.
But, I don't know, any other? Okay, well, all right, we can go ahead and call for a vote, uh, all in favor? Okay. Uh, okay. Uh, do you raise your hand? No, okay, all right, uh, all opposed? All standing? You did, all, okay, you're standing, okay, so we have one extension from, uh, Council Houston, okay. Okay, now would someone like to make a motion to your chair? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
All right. Now, I'm ready to go, but, uh. I occasionally hear things from citizens and this one seemed rather irritating, I haven't had it sprout, but, uh. They called City Ball two days in a row and could not get anyone to answer the phone, and I'm not talking about lunchtime. They tried it more than one time a day and there was no answer to the phone. So then they tried, they thought, well, I'll try this voicemail thing, I'll go through and punch numbers and see what happens. And I don't know what occurred, suddenly she had an option to, uh, even message for Frank Sheridan. I don't think Frank would did it if they left it on our, uh, voicemail, so I, what is going on with our phone, would be my question.
What was the date of the calls?
I don't have those dates, but they were two, two different dates, they weren't all on one day.
Could you send those to, could you get that a duration of time?
I will do that for you.
I'm guessing it's a old voicemail server.
Oh, I mean, the system is confusing, I've been in there, but I haven't started pressing buttons, but, uh, she did, so. And then, uh, I received another comment from a, uh, citizen, uh, we've kinda touched on this before, uh. The Dark Skies Project, does it ring a bell with anybody?
Helen?
Bingo. Uh, she, uh, came in and asked if, uh, how she could get on the, the agenda. She asked for Kai and he said he's busy, here's your three minute, uh, pamphlet to take three minutes. She says she's got more than, than three minutes to talk about the Dark Skies Project. So I'd like to ask if we could get her on the next agenda, she's quite an amazing person and I don't know. How she's gonna say what she's gonna say, but she'd like an opportunity to say it and it's gonna take more than three minutes.
As in, uh, cause I know Helen and I've been talking to her about that for quite awhile, because what she needs, Jim, is a presentation, not a three minute speech.
That's what she said, I mean.
I think she gets confused that there's something more than a three minute speech, cause nobody wants to be cut off during a presentation.
Very confused, cause she says she was gonna give me her entire folder, I'm like, wait, uh, we'll talk about it, cause that's not supposed to happen, I'll say. Can I tell her that she won't have the opportunity to speak for longer than three minutes at the end again?
Yeah, we can, we can put her on, um, I'll have to look and see what's on the, the twenty first agenda.
We, we have two presentations, yeah.
So, um.
Put her off to next month, do you have a work session?
First of May?
If that's, yeah, I'll look and see, but most likely that would be when we would go, cause. We don't normally have presentations at the, at the work sessions, if we do, there's usually one and they're not as, as long meetings usually. Uh, so that would be my.
Okay, no, I'll tell her, first of May, come on down, is that, is that where?
Yeah, and I can email her too and let her know or, or, I don't have her email, we bond or.
Well, I do, and you know, the thing that's.
It's May fifth.
May fifth, okay.
Jim, the thing that I did mention to her is that right now the city's kind of needs, it has some priorities it needs to fulfill. And she does know you and I said, we need to put you back at public works and get an interim manager because we got our budget season, she does understand that. Versus you putting her off. In the past, you've been cut off by a prior administration, so that's why, but she came into my office and I tried to explain that to her also, Jim, but I do have her email, obviously.
No, so she claimed, I told her I didn't, couldn't, uh, speak to that, she said that, uh, City Hall hates women. I told her, I, as a man, I can't tell you that I've experienced that, but, yeah, I can't tell you that's wrong, so. She's, it's a person and she has a lot of opinions and she has the right to be able to say it if it takes longer than three minutes. We should let her.
Okay, get a clarification?
Yeah.
The, the first comment sounded like a complaint in writing, so about the phone system, but you included Helen's?
No, this, those are two separate, uh, things altogether, the phone complaint was purely by giving an answer when they called City Hall, then Helen. I mean, the bee line for me is when she saw me, I guess she might have mentioned my name or something.
No, she just probably recognized your beautiful face.
It was like.
In the public turn.
And, you know, she's, uh, also has a, a space problem that my boundaries are not quite hers, but anyway. A very interesting person, very outspoken and wants to talk about the Dark Skies Project, which we have at least heard of before, uh, at these meetings, so.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, I got a note from the boss, but I don't bring anything here, oh, any updates on, uh, what, what's going on, uh, at Morgan Street Park, on all the garbage, et cetera?
Uh, we've got the fence that we provided, uh, we. Uh, we've got the fence, uh, we provided, uh, residents with bags and they've been cleaning it up.
Excellent, awesome, and then along with the same thing for updates, is there any?
We're back for, we are going to, when, once we get equipment down there, we're gonna do a full cleanup.
Okay.
But I simply can't get anything down there right now.
Yeah, and if, if you can let me and Peter and Ian know if, if we're still all interested, let me know when that happens, we can do that.
And then you said we had a company that was, uh, that had bid to, uh, replace the railing on, excuse me, West Main Street. Is that still ongoing, they'll be thinking about it or getting to it?
We awarded it.
Okay.
And we're waiting for the product.
Excellent, thank you.
That'll keep me out of trouble, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, Ian?
No, I, I was just gonna say in that phone call thing, I've called two before and it says, please leave a message for Dave Shaw. So I've done that personally and I've heard that, which is kinda corny. Or I'll call City Hall and say, we've reached code enforcement and I'm thinking, well, that's not that I want at City Hall, so it's a little bit munked up.
So our phone system, just in case, we is no longer supported by the company that we purchased the hardware from back in twenty twenty. It is one of the things that we are, Kai and I have been working on and we actually are working to get a quote. To get our phone system replaced, we can't ev- we can't even change our voicemails, our stuff, our, our greetings. So there's a lot, there's, it's pretty terrible, so we are working on getting some of those. Voice, and a lot of the voice of our IP, we have a third, line three, when we receive a phone call on line three. If we're on lines one and line two, line three just goes into la la land. So we will answer it and it comes across TG nine zero zero five, whatever that means on the caller ID. They can hear us sometimes, but we can hear absolutely nothing, it is a huge problem and it is something we're working on, so.
Okay, uh, Liz, you have a comment?
Yes, um, there was an incident recently, an overdose incident. And my question is, is, is there Narcan at City Hall that if it was needed in an emergency, that we could get a hold of it?
Yes.
Or would that?
Yes.
Yes, there is, okay, good, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Okay.
And the best response to an overdose, if anybody witnessed it, is to call nine one one, first response.
That's what I did, I, I didn't witness it, I had someone send me a video that was online, which shouldn't have been, but. So I called her immediately.
I did see that it was horrible, we should have called nine one one instead.
Yeah.
We've got comments in the past, that people's first response to emergencies is to get the phone out. Sad, because you should respond.
It's very sad, I mean, the first, we want should be to call law enforcement, not videotape it.
Use your phone as a phone, not as a camera.
Alright, uh, Ian?
Yeah. I just want a quick update, uh, Frank, the man was living on the fridge. Uh, I've been further working with him and helping, and it seems as if, uh, he may be. Housed soon, uh, in a more prominent situation, but I'm not, I'm super sure where I'm gonna have this day. So, but I am helping them, so.
Excellent, that's great, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And if there's no objection, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Gotcha, alright, third, any other discussion on that?
Well, I moved to table, uh, Ian's book.
No, uh, alright, all in favor? Alright, I think that's unanimous, uh, we're adjourned, it is, uh, eight thirty five.
Well done.
I actually think procedurally, I.
Recording stopped.